Hi, Matt. Thanks for all your help.
Anytime.
Yeah.
My job. How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you doing? Are you still at Valley Road?
Yeah, I can't see the background.
It is raining hard. I hope you don't have trouble getting home.
No, three miles away.
I lost my TV signal. I'm a little nervous for tonight. Back now.
Hey, Matt, can you get the Yankees game streaming and share your screen during this meeting?
I'm a Mets fan.
Well, now, the Mets, you know, Cohen's going to... He brings Sandy Alderson back, and he's patient and makes the right decisions. He's got money to spend.
I like Sandy Alderson. Sandy Alderson.
Are we public? Yes.
I mean, it's...
Yes. I just want to say that I like all sports teams. I like Philadelphia sports teams. I like New York sports teams. I didn't mean to...
How's everyone?
Good, Barry. How are you? It's been like two minutes.
It's pouring raining here tonight. I think we're gonna get all the grass watered we want tonight.
I see Lisa Goldsmith's on. Barry, are you worried that after her star turn in the video, she might get lured away to a Hollywood career?
She's probably looking for a big contract based on that, Brian, so we'll see.
I'm a fan. I watched it. I know where to put my hand sanitizer on and wash my hands.
I think this is my first on-time meeting.
Dave, who are you?
I asked myself that question. I hope everyone had a chance to have a gourmet dinner between in the 20 minutes we had.
Show my family where dinner was and say, "Why didn't you have dinner yet?"
After fasting all of yesterday, I'm used to not eating, so.
I don't like this part.
Hello, thank you for joining us.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
We're missing Michelle.
Michelle.
Jess.
There's Jess.
There's Jess.
We could start, and we'll wait, and Michelle will jump in.
Hang on. Where is it? Okay, shall I start? Matt, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions for educational, financial, and personnel matters of the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on the items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 146 at sequencia, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packard, and the Times on January 9, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1. In the event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administration, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Jess Deutsch. Betsy Baglio.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Present.
Peter Katz.
Here.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Yeah.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first action item tonight is item D1, Adoption of Minutes for the September 15, 2020 meeting. Can I have a motion? Brian, second. Betsy, any discretion? If not, could we have a roll, please?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jeff Deutsch.
I'll abstain. I wasn't here.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Bill Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
I'll abstain also because I was not here.
Excellent. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is President's comments, and I will just welcome everyone tonight to the meeting. Thank you so much for tuning in again. This is, we continue to have meetings where we say thank you to everyone for their hard work and their flexibility and the willingness to work and enroll with it as we all learn how to do school in this new way. And we know that our people are working extremely hard, and now our teachers are going to be coming back and doing some very unusual and difficult teaching, and we're grateful for all of that. And I also want to say that I was privileged on Saturday to attend the ribbon cutting at the YWCA Early Childhood Center. They had a renovation that was funded by the Burke Foundation. They have space there for 130 children ages eight, eight weeks to six years old. They're accepting applications. They have a few spots left in the younger years that are actually free childcare for certain families that are eligible. It's a beautiful center. We have, we are fortunate to partner with the Y. We have two pre-K classrooms there, and we're delighted to have that partnership. And I was just so happy to be there. It looks beautiful, and it's an example of in our community that really does serve, serve our, serve our children and serve our families. So that was, that was a great thing to be part of, and, and I want to let people know about that. But the good news tonight, Daphne Kendall, will you do the honors and tell us about our third successful settlement of a contract?
Yeah, it'd be my pleasure. Thank you, Beth. Matt, do you have that PowerPoint? Could you share the screen, please? Thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you. So it is my pleasure to report that on the agenda tonight for board approval is a contract between the Board of Education and PREA, the Teachers' Union. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this negotiation presented unique challenges as none of us had ever negotiated during a pandemic. My colleague, Michelle Tuck-Ponder, and I met many times with some of our administrators and the Teacher Union representatives, Justin Matthews, Jen Crowder, Renee Sporn, and John McCann. And to say that these negotiations were cordial is an understatement. It really reflected a partnership. The teacher's contract expired June 30, and, you know, we worked throughout the summer. We had some obstacles this year that we haven't had in the past for the Board to consider. The first is, this has been a heavy lift year for the teachers. They've had to learn to teach remote. They are now responsible for hybrid and remote students, and they had to learn a new management system. And we're grateful. We realize that if we didn't have the caliber of teachers we have, our kids would not be learning to the extent they are right now. We also had budget concerns. In March, you know, the world fell off a cliff, and we had concerns about state aid being cut. Fortunately, most of our aid remained intact. However, we have uncertainty for next year. As people may have heard, New Jersey has a $10 billion budgetary shortfall. So we had to negotiate with the concern in mind for next year. We didn't want to promise something and then not be able to deliver it. And then another issue to consider was a new healthcare law that now takes effect January 1, 2021. It was set to take effect July 1, 2020. It was delayed by six months. This healthcare law is a lower-cost option that all new employees to the district as of July 1 will need to enroll in, and so the district hopes that we will see some cost savings with that, but it's too early to tell. Next slide, please. Okay, so the Negotiations Committee goals. First of all, students first. We realized that a protected negotiation would not serve our students well. And our kids have had a difficult year, and we didn't want to, you know, add to that. The next point was labor peace. And it was very important to the Board that we come to a resolution with our union. And if this contract is approved tonight, it will be seven years guaranteed of labor peace from 2015 through 2022. This is not the norm. Hamilton and Hillsborough, our neighbors, in the past year underwent protracted negotiations. And finally, fiscal responsibility. Again, we're all very concerned about what the future holds, and we want to maintain contracts that will not cause us to have to dip into our surplus to pay annual costs. Okay, so with these goals in mind, thank you, thank you, Matt. Year one, so this is a two-year contract. Year one and year two are almost the same except for some provisions. So I'll just go over these provisions, and then if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask. So year one is a salary increase of 2.99%. The union agreed to keep extra pay for extra work stipends flat. Previously, it had been 2.25%. We are really pleased that the union agreed that the middle school day will now end at 3:10. That will take effect once we go back to normal. And this is, again, the Boards showing our concern for students first. The high school had moved to a 3:20 end time, and it was very important to us to work on getting a more parallel end time at the middle school. So we're very grateful to that. The prescription co-payments will double for 90-day supplies of generic and name-brand drugs. Staff tuition. Out-of-district students for existing staff, the tuition per student will increase by $500 per student. For new teachers hired on or after July 1, 2020, tuition per student will increase to $5,000 per student. So for all new employees who want to send a kid, their, their child to the district, it will cost $5,000 per year. We eliminated the healthcare give-back for teachers hired on or after July 1, 2020. PRIA agreed, and I just want to, I'm throwing this out there because it just really shows the collaboration that we've had with the union. The union agreed to add, at no cost to the Board this year, one additional day of work for teachers. And this day was used for professional development for remote learning. Now, next year, we will give that day back to the teachers. But this is just another example of the, of the union working with us to address the needs that we see. And then finally, and these are just the highlights, flexibility to hire leave replacements at step-one salary and give them employee-only healthcare. And so leave replacements are temporary employees to the district who come in for teachers who are on leave, and this gives us the flexibility to hire them at a lower salary. So before we go on to the next slide, I just wanted to point out, everything with an asterisk is cost, a cost savings to the district. So again, this, this, this contract clearly balances our goals of fiscal responsibility, labor peace, and students first. So next, please, Matt. Okay, so year two. All provisions of year one apply, except the salary increase is 2.5%. And the out-of-district, the tuition for out-of-district students of staff for new teachers hired on or after July 1, 2021, will increase to $7,500 per student. And then the next page, please. Oh, thank you. Yes. So I want to thank my committee, Michelle Tuck-Ponder, Betsy Baglio, Debbie Bronfeld, Brian McDonald, Mike Volpe, and Matt Bolden, who were very active, and the idea to hire leave replacements at, at lower steps was their idea. And this could potentially save the district between $75,000 and $150,000 a year. So it's a very good suggestion, and we appreciate their work with us. And the PRIA negotiations team, Jen Crowder, Justin Matthews, Renee Sporn, John McCann. Again, they, they had trust in us to work with us throughout the summer, and we had very cordial and collaborative negotiations. And this, this is proof that there's no reason for negotiations to be combative. If we can negotiate during a pandemic and come to what I believe to be a fair contract for both sides, it can be done all the time. So Jen, Justin, Renee, and John are on the call tonight if they have anything to say. Again, thank you for your partnership.
Thank you, Daphna.
Thanks, Daphna. I do want to just chime in on behalf of the PREA negotiations, negotiations team. And I want to thank you, and I want to thank Michelle. And we met throughout that summer to make sure that Princeton educators would begin this school year with the security and protection of a contract. Michelle and Daphna, and I want to say the same. They were open with us and honest with us from the very start, and together we were able to solve issues, come to agreements so that the professional community that we are, that we can start with a sense of peace and purpose this school year. So thank you, Daphna. Thank you, Michelle, on behalf of the whole team.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
And Daphne, also, one, one more thing you guys accomplished was to, I think the PRIA agreement is two years, and the other is our one, so we've separated now. We don't have all three coming due in the future, which was a bit of a challenge. So that's another thing you've accomplished. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Yeah, and just real quick, I do want to thank Daphna, not only for leading and listening, but to both the Board and PREA for making sure you heard what was really important to both of us because, you know, at some point, we had different things. But, you know, hearing what was really important and so that we both walked away very excited to, you know, agree on this contract. So looking forward to it. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Justin, Jennifer, and John for joining us tonight to be here for this. Do we now want to go and do the ratification? Why don't we just do that? I think, can we move forward? Do we need a motion for that, a ratification of the agreement, PRIA Contract 2020 to 2022? So could I have a...
Did we want to have public to see if there's any public comment before we vote, or?
Um, I mean, we, we could leave it and do it after the comment. We can do it first thing after public comment if you prefer.
Can I just comment that Renee is here also?
Oh, I didn't see Renee. I'm sorry. Are you down there on the bottom of my screen? Hello, Renee, and welcome. Yes, you are, of course. Thank you, Bob. Okay, well, we can wait on the vote then and move on, and then we'll come back to the vote right after our public forum. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Have been asked the public if they want to comment on the comment, on the contract specifically, and then we could vote?
We could do that. Matt, do you want to have a quick, see if there's any public comment on the contract, and then we can vote on it?
Anyone out there, just raise your hand. Jen Cohen? Jennifer Cohen, sorry.
Hi, I was wondering how we propose to recruit black teachers and other teachers of color who have been pretty much priced out of Princeton? If we are raising the fee for new staffers to send their out-of-district children to our schools? Because I know several black teachers who do not reside in Princeton. That's my question.
I guess, Ms. Cohen, I think we can take comment, but we don't really have Q and A at this point. It's not, not, I mean, Daphna, unless you want to say something.
You know, I'm happy. So Jen, thanks for your question. And, you know, again, as Debbie said, we had to listen to all, all sides, and there are community members that think that we're not, you know, that we're not, we're overcrowding our schools. And so, and we're not charging enough for tuition. I personally think that having teachers bring their students here is a positive. I think it's good for our, it makes them part of the community. It does bring diversity. But, you know, there are 10 people on this board, and we had to come to a compromise. And the intent is not to keep anyone out.
Any other questions out there from the public about the PRIA ratification, the Teachers' Union contract? There were people chatting in.
I think we've got to just keep this as a public comment, just for our process. So.
Seeing no other hands raised, but.
Okay, then I think we'll move on to, can I have a motion to vote on the PRIA contract? It's Daphna, second by Brian. Would you please call the roll?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Well, that is unanimous. Motion passes.
Matt, if I can ask you one more thing. The union has requested that they be demoted from panelists to whatever attendee.
Denied.
Is that in the contract, Daphna?
Yes, it is.
Should we vote on that?
You have to, and you have to second it as well. We have to compromise, Brian, as much as it's nice to see new faces.
Goodbye.
It's nice seeing them here.
We won't be offended.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Bye, Renee.
Take me a minute.
Thank you, Matt.
Every time I do it, they, they bounce around on the screen.
Okay, now we're on to the superintendent comments.
Yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick comments, and then I want to show a short video. I also want to make a comment. Today, I wrote a letter to the staff, and I complimented the, I actually referred to Dr. Helmrich, our school doctor's comments regarding athletic protocols, where he commended not only our athletic director, but our athletic trainers and our school nurses for the protocols, which they have been utilizing since we opened up our athletic program on September 14. And if I can remember the exact quote, he told them that they were crushing it. It was due to their diligence and protocols and following all the social distancing requirements that the Board laid out that night. So I, I do want to commend them all publicly for, for a job well done so far, and we're hoping that that continues as we move into Phase One, which we will be doing, bringing back our autism classes and our MD classes on Thursday and Friday for an orientation and for acclamation. And then on Monday, we will be bringing back on October 5, our pre-K K and 1 students. So we begin our Phase One, and at that time, we'll be watching all of our protocols, our transportation, and being able to make adjustments for the reopening on October 12 of our grades 2 through 5, and then on October 19, hopefully, 6 through 12. So I also want to comment on, on the fact that we are moving forward with the, with the M and M meeting on October 8 to take a look at the facilities planning. Joining me on that committee from the administration, from a number of volunteers who wanted to work on this project, are our Assistant Principal Jared at the PHS, Assistant Principal Rashaun at PHS, Assistant Principal Tim at Poons Middle School, and Principal Ramirez from Little Brook. They will be joining Matt and I on the in-house team working with M and M and then bringing the Board information as we move forward with that. In addition to that, I just wanted to update you with regard to the special education audit. I know it began before my tenure began here in Princeton last spring, and basically, they began with interviews, but the actual walkthroughs that they were going to do and then make recommendations to the district have not occurred because of the pandemic. But as we move back into hybrid learning over the next month or two, I think there may be an opportunity for us to reengage and, and work with the PCG group to complete that special education audit. So I just wanted to bring those things to your attention. But I do want to highlight mainly tonight the work of Dr. Helmrich, our school doctor, Dr. Pi, a pediatrician who lives in our community, Jeff Grosser, and Kathy from his office, and our school nurses. And we have a 30-minute video, which I'm encouraging all faculty, staff, parents, and students to watch. It's, it's terrific with regard to COVID, our protocols, how we will react to various situations that may occur during the school year. But tonight, I'm not going to play the, or ask Matt to show the entire 30 minutes. I want to just highlight three or four or five minutes of the nurses segment because I think this is really important for every parent and student to watch before we begin to come into school for hybrid learning. They have done a terrific job, and again, I just want to thank the whole group. So Matt, if you wouldn't mind prompting that. There we go, and we'll show a little bit of...
Good morning, everyone. My name is Liz Ivic, and I'm the school nurse at Johnson Park School. This morning, you're going to take a look at Johnson Park School, and we're going to show you some things that are going to look different when you come back to school. I'm with another nurse, Lisa Goldsmith, who's the nurse at Princeton High School. Together, we're going to show you what to expect when you come back to school. Before you come into the building, you're going to be screened by your parents at home to make sure that you're not sick. Lisa's going to talk to you and tell you what's going to happen before you arrive at school. Before you arrive, your parents are going to need to fill out a screening form. It looks like this. The screening tool will be either on paper, or we're hoping by the time school starts that it might be online. All staff, students, and visitors when they arrive at the buildings will have to fill out these screening tools. We also will show you a flow sheet that parents will have and staff can have, and that's an indication and direction of when to know to keep your students home or when the staff member should stay home if they're not feeling well. We're going to go inside now and show you some of the new technologies and new ways to try to keep you guys safe and healthy while you're in the buildings at school. You're going to be coming into the building with your mask on. You might also see some teachers wearing a face shield. Just also helps protect that. Nothing can be scared of. During school, you're going to keep your mask on. Teachers will give you mask breaks, that you're able to take the mask off, take a few breaths, particularly when you're outside. Now, we're going to go inside and see how you're going to be screened once you enter the building.
Once you arrive in the building, you're going to come through the doors with your mask on, and we're going to take your temperature. Every building will have a scanner. In Johnson Park...
In Johnson Park, they call her Penelope. So you can either be scanned like Nurse Liz is going to demonstrate now. Normal temperature. Normal temperature. If for some reason there's a large influx of students under staff, we also have thermometers, and people will be onsite to take your temperature with a scanner. Okay, Nurse Liz is perfect, and she would go on to class. If we have any problems and the temperature reading is high or abnormal, we will send you to the nurse's office, and she will call your parents and make sure that you go home and are taken care of. Once your temperature is taken and you're safe to go to your classroom, we're going to come over and we're going to ask you to put a little hand sanitizer on here in the lobby, or wash your hands once you get to the classroom. Then the sanitizer, then you can rub onto your hands before you head to your classroom. When you're walking to class, stay social distance. We want you to stay about six feet from your friends. A good way to judge is if you want to put your arm out. Nurse Lisa and I are six feet apart when both of our hands almost touch. That's a way to know you're at a safe distance from your friends. Then you're going to walk down the hallway. I want you to notice that on the floors, we're going to have signs, just reminders to show you to stay far enough away from your friends to be safe. If you are not feeling well in class, the teacher will either call or send you down to the nurse's office, depending on what school you're in. Once you arrive at the nurse's office, the nurses will assess you right away, because we don't want you to spread your germs throughout the office. If we decide that you have some COVID-19 symptoms, we're going to put you in a room. It has a sign out here, not to scare anyone, but we're trying to keep people who might have the virus isolated, which means you're going to be on your own in the room. The nurses are here in the office with you at all times, but they may not be in the room with you the whole time. We want parents to know they must have emergency contacts that are within 30 minutes of school. We know that might be challenging for some of you, but it's very important that we get these children home as quickly as possible to minimize the spreading of any potential viruses. If you're sent home by the school nurse, when you come back to school, your parents are going to be required to have a form filled out by the doctor that says you're evaluated and you're safe to return to school. Very important, you won't be allowed back into school if you're sent home with COVID-like symptoms unless you return this form. Once you bring the form back to school, you'll be bringing it back directly to the nurses in your buildings, so they can assess you and make sure that you aren't really feeling well enough to be with other students. The staff will also have a form to fill out that they'll have to bring to their doctors, similar to the students. So we make sure that the staff comes back feeling healthy and well and COVID negative. Okay, now we've finished our tour, and hopefully you've all gotten a sense of what school will be like when you come back. A little bit different, but everyone in the building is still the same. You'll all be wearing your masks. Your parents will do the symptom screening, and staff will do the symptom screening too. We'll check temperatures. You'll follow the signs all throughout the school. We'll make sure to sanitize and wash our hands very often throughout the day. And then we will always be here for you if you need anything for resources. Parents, we want to let you know that all the school nurses have been trained in contact tracing over the summer. If we were to have a positive case, all of us will be the follow-up contact tracing to be sure that everyone is safe in the school. We've been following the guidelines all summer of the CDC, the Department of Health. We speak to the Department of Education, and we follow the guidance of our school physician for all the decisions and protocols we make. These will all be in place and will be followed once you return to school, and everyone will be kept safe in our care. We look forward to seeing everybody back at school.
Okay, thank you, Matt, appreciate it. Really a terrific job by our school nurses. And I will tell you, we're breaking it into four different segments, because sometimes it's difficult to get 30 minutes of spare time to watch the entire video. So we'll break Dr. Helmrich, Dr. Pye, Jeff and Kathy from the Princeton Health Department, and our school nurses, which you just saw, into four different segments. They will be up on our website. In addition to that, tomorrow, we will also be sending you, all of our parents in the community, a link to all of our protocols that we will be following in case that we do have a positive case of COVID. But once again, I want to thank Mickey for organizing this video. All of our staff who participated, especially our school docs, and Dr. George, and Jeff, and Kathy from the Princeton Health Department, and Dr. Pye and Dr. Helmrich for giving their time. They're very busy people, and we're just appreciative of all they do for us. They're just wonderful people to work with, and a credit to the community. So with that, I think we need to move to two action items. One is giving the authority to send the statement of assurance to the county superintendent on the board's behalf. And the other is the change in our reopening plan, which highlights the changes of October 1, bringing in our autistic youngsters and multiply disabled on October 1 and 2, and changing that plan, which is required then to be submitted to the county superintendent to notify her of what we are currently doing and what our practice will be in the next week or so. So those two items, Matt, I guess you would take them individually.
Dr. Galasso, I have those on as consent items.
Do you put them into consent? Okay, fine.
Yep, so we'll get to those with the consent vote later. So I think that would then just take us to the public forum, Dr. Galasso, unless you had anything else.
That's it. I just want to thank the board members who were able to make the school visits this morning. I think it's very helpful for the board to see the work that's been completed in the schools, and also talk to them about the plans for the continued upgrading of the school facilities throughout the school year. So I appreciate giving me the few hours of time this morning, and thank you all for coming out. Dr. Galasso, we have Facilities Director Dave Harding on tonight. He's going to give a short presentation about COVID-19 protocols related.
Okay, before we move on, I just had a question about the reopening plan.
Yeah.
So for, and Dr. Galasso, thank you for spending two and a half hours with the board this morning, showing us all the work that's been done in the buildings. So I just have a question. For Phase 5, October 12th, who goes back to school? Is it Cohort A or is it Cohort B?
Will be Cohort A on October 5, be the fifth and sixth. And, or Bob, are we bringing in? Let me just, let me just check with Bob, because I know we did changes a couple of times. Or on October 5th and 6th, are we bringing Cohort A and AC? And
Cohort, no.
A on the 5th and B on the 6th is orientation, and then follow our rotation?
No, Cohort A is coming in
Okay.
Monday and Tuesday. But it's not only pre-K K and 1, it's also going to be
Two to five.
All the self-contained special ed classes as well.
So, so, and then Wednesday, there's no, there's no in-person? And Thursday, Friday, it's Cohort B, is it?
Correct.
So who comes to school for 6 through 12 on October 19th?
Cohort A.
On October 19th, because there is going to be Cohort B for that week, and then the following week is going to be Cohort A.
Okay, so Cohort A for the middle and the high school won't go to school until October 26th?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, did you say, so Matt, you were, you were saying that you've got another presentation you'd like to do now with Dave?
Yes.
Okay.
Dave's up.
Yeah, I didn't really repair anything video-wise, but just we've been very active. I know Matt and I have been opening up a dark, a dark building since about June, early June. But you did see the temperature kiosks that were put in place. We also have given out about 50 handheld digital temperature sensors for other people to help when it gets a little more crowded. From a sanitizer standpoint, we're about halfway through our 330 gallons of Furmanich liquid that we've dispensed to each classroom for teachers for high-touch areas or any kind of, any kind of usage they need it. We also put out about 420 gallons of hand sanitizer for the classrooms, for each of the students, for the kids, and also 80 hands-free sanitizer dispensers all throughout the schools and the corridors and important places, key places. In our bathrooms, we've removed all our hand blower hair dryers, hand dryers. We've replaced them with hands-free paper towel dispensers, about 100 of those. We've done 250 newly installed hands-free toilet and flushometer valves. In addition, we've inspected and repaired any this, any, any flushometers or odor valves that weren't working properly. We've installed a few bottle filling stations, and then all our fountains and bubblers have all been deactivated just for sanitary purposes. We've done quite a bit of Plexiglas manufacturing and assembly. There's probably over about 500 Plexiglas dividers throughout the district, and shields for science and biology, special ed rooms, cafeterias, a lot of small instruction areas, our wood shops, our conference rooms, art rooms. We've had about, we've had two firms helping us. A lot of help from, if I can put in a plug for Nelson Glass right here in Princeton, they've been very helpful to us. Our mechanical ventilation systems, we've been getting heavily involved in those. All of our classrooms obviously have either unit ventilators or Airdale systems. We've been in the process of assessing all our exhaust fan functions, our rooftop air handlers, and all our classroom unit ventilators in the high school and Johnson Park. We've installed needlepoint bipolar isolation units in our fan coils, our Airdales, our nurses' station air handlers that supply air to their offices and spaces, and to a lot of other key rooftop units. We just, those devices will help us. They agglomerate the particulate in the air, making our filters more effective. The ions will help in aiding in mold and bacteria and virus activity, and also reduce odor and VOC in our classrooms. We've also upgraded to Murph 13 filters in any of the systems in our district that can handle the increase in static. Most of those are Airdale systems. We have 129 Airdales currently, and they, due to their variable frequency drives, are able to ramp up and handle the extra static and the filters that will plug a lot faster. We'll be monitoring those systems, monitor the load on the filters, the dirt, and it will tell us when we need to be changing those. So we'll be monitoring that. And when we start to see an increase, we'll just go through and blanket change out across the district. Also, with the Airdale units, we've modified the sequence of operation on those so that they better meet the model that Ashray has proposed. We're going to be pulling in about 30% minimum of outside air, which can go up to as much as 100% in good humidity and temperature conditions or ideal conditions. We're getting throughout our district that design in the previous years, and also with the new Airdales, is pretty close to eight air changes per classroom, which is good. We also, there's a standby mode in the Airdales, which we've deactivated so that they'll continue to operate whether the classroom is empty or occupied. And we're also going to run them at 55% relative humidity, which is an environment that is not, you know, not COVID-friendly, so to speak. We'll also be purging our rooms. We'll be running these units as if the spaces are occupied till about 6:30 PM every day. And then they'll still operate continuously overnight, but at a reduced setback temperature. The fans will continue to operate those well. We've also put in our nurses' stations. We've got purchased six hospital-grade professional HEPA filtration systems, portable systems that they can have in their areas for extra safety for them. And that's, you know, that's pretty much most of the stuff that we've done. It's, it's, it's been a journey with getting the procurement of all these devices, but we're getting them and we're in good shape. The, our custodial staff will, as of the first, will start to return to or revert back to our normal scheduling, working the full day with a night shift. We'll be bringing some of the night shift people in during the day for extra coverage. And we're also bringing in some outsized, outside resources to sort of act almost as if, you know, wiping, you know, high-touch surfaces, getting in and out of the bathrooms within an hour time period, cleaning any kind of high-touch surfaces with sanitizers and so forth. So there'll be more like a floating couple people, floating porters, so to speak, that'll be going around the schools and just constantly wiping down and just moving about in addition to our normal staff. And, you know, then we'll fully ramp up on the 12th and the 19th, and, you know, sticking with those similar shifts and schedules. So I think that's keeping it quick, that's sort of it in a nutshell.
Yeah, do you probably just want to add, Dave, just about the bus modifications also?
Well, I know on our buses, we're constantly doing, you know, a wipe down or spray down of the seats and areas. We also have a designated seat behind the driver that's sort of enclosed. So if we have an individual that's on a bus that's suspect to have a temperature or a problem, we can isolate that individual.
And we have the driver kind of encapsulated also.
Yes.
Barry, I don't want to interrupt your report, but could I make one comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Matt and Dave. They have been getting in, I think, between 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning. And from their backgrounds, they're very luxurious and a well-appointed background. You can tell they're both still in the office. And I, I, you know, just want to thank both of them for their extraordinary commitment. They have many balls that they're juggling, but over the last two months, their work to ensure that all of our schools are as safe as they can possibly be for our students, for our teachers and staff is, it's really been inspiring, and I just wanted to acknowledge it and thank them.
Nice job.
And I want to say, you know, Daphne mentioned that a number of us went through the elementary schools today and did tours, and it was really remarkable to see some of the work that's been done and the difference as a parent, having children in these buildings for the last, I don't know, 15 years. I want to compliment you in particular on the bathroom floors, which have been scrubbed and polished, and the painting and the touch-ups, and I think the pillars outside the Riverside School with the rainbow colors. There's some really nice things that have been done to try to cheer things up a little bit for our, for our children. Thank you for all the work.
We owe, we owe a lot of that energy from Barry, I think. Barry's been terrific about getting things done and helping us and initiating a lot of those processes and making it possible to get the people behind it. So it's made a big difference, big difference. So I think our schools right now are probably cleaner than they've probably been in 10 or 15 years.
They look, there's a marked difference, and we really appreciate that. So does that take us then to our public, first public comment period? Again, we invite the public to make comments. We, it's not a Q and A. We want to hear what you have to say. We are listening. Please keep it to about three minutes if you can, max, and to allow for other people to have the time to speak. Please state your name and address, and you can raise your hand on the, on your screen, and you'll be called upon by Mr. Bolden.
Linise Hall? Dr. Linise Hall?
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. I just start off by thanking all for your tireless efforts. I know the board is voluntary, you guys, I applaud you all and you so much for all that you're doing, taking time for family, so that we, you can help all of our families. And to Dr. Galasso, Dr. Ginsberg, for all, really, really appreciate it. I specifically want to speak about the math program. I received some, that is quite disturbing, our math program. I suspected it for a while. I was in conversation with our district supervisor, Stephanie Tidwell. And she made it known that in the elementary school, we teach up to the fifth grade of requirements for mathematics. And then in the middle school, we skip sixth and seventh grade common requirements and we go straight to pre-algebra. I suspected when my oldest son was going through the district that it was an everyday math problem. I saw that there were holes in his foundation as he entered pre-algebra. Um, and Stephanie Tidwell has basically reassured me that it's actually the district, we're only teaching the children up to fifth grade. And then we expect them to then tackle a subject matter that is nationally really intended for eighth graders. We do have family members who live in the Midwest and they get pre-algebra in the eighth grade and that is considered normal. I would just really like to encourage the board and Dr. Galasso and Dr. Ginsberg to please support Ms. Tidwell in doing a full evaluation of the math program. She indicated that she intended to do that this year, you know, she's only been here one year. But it is pretty disheartening to know that, um, you know, we all basically have to get tutors for our kids if they're not brilliant in math because they're missing two years in order to keep up. Thank you so much for all again that you're doing, I feel like this is a major equity issue and I hope that it will be taken up in the future, thank you.
Thank you. Adam Bierman.
Oh, hi, um, I just want to praise again the board on Dr. Colasko and Mr. Harding. The new facilities team is really, from what I've investigated, heard is doing a great job. Uh, in the past, facilities upkeep hasn't been less than optimal. And now, I mean, people have told me what you just said, how the buildings look and how they're being kept up and you're preparing for, of course. Back to, back to school learning, so again, um, keep it up and, and I just want you to know that I appreciate it.
Thank you. Helen Rose.
Hi. Oh, hi, my name is Helen Rose, um, I'm one of the pediatricians in the community, I live on Linden Lane. Um, I have four kids in the Princeton Public Schools, fifth, eighth, 10th and 12th grade. So first of all, I do want to thank everybody, the teachers, the administrators, the staff, the parents. For working so hard to make this work this fall. Um, I certainly have found that remote learning has improved quite a bit. But I am, you know, I am concerned about remote learning and I have a few concerns that I just want to share again. As we go back and as we move forward. I just want to reiterate that I feel like remote learning is not good for our children. We should continue to do in-person learning as much as possible. And I think we should consider how we're going to move forward with in-person learning. How are we going to increase the time in the classroom as the year moves forward? Um, I know we haven't even started yet and I appreciate that we're about to do more than we're doing now. But I think we need to not forget that. You know, it's still not ideal for the kids to be home so much, I think there's a lot of reasons for this. I think first of all, it's just playing too much screen time. Um, our elementary kids are looking at a screen from 9:30 to 2:30, 3 o'clock. Right now, every day and in the fall, three days a week. That's definitely more than the AAP, the American Academy of Pediatric recommends. Heck of a lot more than a lot of parents in the community are comfortable with. So I think that's important not to forget that. The other thing I think is so important and I'll tell you, um, I'm such a bleeding heart, I mean, I'm really coming at this. From this perspective, our children are so isolated. And they're really getting hit hard from this. I'm seeing more and more cases of mental illness. Hospitalizations for this. What does that mean, am I talking too long? Oh, but anyway, sorry. And so I'm very concerned about that, I'm concerned that in our disadvantaged families. The children are not well-supervised, when I worked with. A disadvantaged population and my other job before I moved here. Several, several families, one parent worked two jobs, the other parent worked one. These parents are out of the house and so I think this is hitting them harder, I'm seeing an increase in obesity. I'm seeing our ADHD kids struggling and not being able to pay attention and not learning the material. I'm also seeing that the children don't have the same connection with their teachers, our teachers are fantastic. They're working hard, they're doing a good job, but it's still a screen. And I do want to reiterate that for children, this is not a dangerous disease. 99.99% of kids survive, we just got a morbidity and mortality weekly report. You know, and. I just want to stress that this is not more dangerous than other colds for children. And I'm not talking about their family members, I'm not talking about people who are high risk. So we, I feel like it's so important that we continue to advocate for our children because I'm not seeing any. Advocates for children, I'm seeing a lot of people worried about everybody else's safety. But I want to make sure that we continue to try to put our children first. And try to, you know, do what's right for them. I think that the dangers of remote learning really far exceed the dangers and the risk of COVID for our children.
Helen?
I want to say.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Yes, so the second thing I want to say very quickly is that I, I really employ the, the. The board to try to bring sports and in-person activities back to the middle school. It's a great time for kids to start sports and I think it's a lost opportunity if we don't do it, their friends, their teachers, our, our coaches. And I think when they get to the high school, it's much more intimidating to join a sport that maybe they haven't done before. It's much more accessible to our needier kids. All right, thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Your hard work, I really do appreciate it, I know it's been so difficult for everyone. Take care.
Eddie Brady.
Hi folks. I want to make a comment about an item that's a little further down on the agenda, it's the Johnson Park HVAC award. I do want to preface my comments about the fact that I know everyone has been like extremely busy dealing with COVID these last few months. And I don't want my comments to sound too critical. I must admit, I was surprised to see the item on tonight's meeting agenda. The, um. The, the project bids, they were never really discussed at any recent finance committee meetings. And they were only discussed in closed sessions at the last three facility committee meetings. So, you know, in that kind of setting, the public never received information on the bids, you know, nor had a chance to ask questions or. Wait in, in on the bids or the project as a whole. You know, I have questions, but most of which I'm not going to ask at this time, but I do have a main question and that is. If you decide to award the project tonight, it looks like it's going to be funded out of a capital reserves and. You're going to effectively add 1.7 million dollars. There's a $26.9 million referendum budget that was approved by the voters about two years ago. I know that the state law allows you to do this. And I'm sure you're feeling compelled to award the project from both an equity standpoint and a COVID response standpoint. But the question I have is, is it really the right thing to do? I know that on one hand, you're meeting voter expectations because, you know, the voters wanted the improvements in the HVAC system at JP. But on the other hand, you are exceeding. The amount of money that the voters sort of approved to be spent, although that's not the exact language, I think the voters. Approved appropriating the money, not necessarily setting limits on the spending. The other part of the question too is, you know, is it the right thing to do at this time? The, you know, the high school project, which is, you know, the largest referendum project, hasn't really fully started. Not really sure what cost or runs you're going to incur. You're sort of still in the midst of the pandemic and you're no idea what additional costs that might bring. And I know that, uh, you know, Dave Harding was charged with developing, you know, a five-year facilities plan for the district and I'm sure he hasn't had an opportunity to do that. So you're kind of missing the big picture. So I'll just wrap it up by saying, I, you know, I hope the board has all the information it needs to, you know, discuss this important matter. In terms of spending the additional 1.7 million dollars. And that it, you know, takes the time and discusses it robustly. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Alexis Custer.
Hi, my name is Alexis Custer, um, so hello, members of Princeton Board of Education, I've never spoken at a board meeting before. I'm a science teacher at the high school. And I want to let you know that I was denied my accommodation to continue to work remotely. In the spirit of equity, students and families are being given this option. I, like many others, went to several doctor's appointments over the summer. And filled out forms and provided them with the district. Today, I received a supplemental doctor's note that reads the following. And I don't mind sharing my personal medical information. I am on a high dose immunosuppressive medicine. I have inflammatory bowel disease. And I'm on a second immunosuppressive medicine called Entivio. I have required hospitalization for this and while it has never kept me from doing and performing all of the essential duties of my job. If I should come in contact with anyone without full protective PPE, including a fitted N95 mask. Because of the asymptomatic spreading, in my case, I am actually recommended to remain in home. She is extremely high risk for catching and possibly severe consequences from COVID-19. As much as any patient on high-dose chemotherapy. Which is why she is for all intensive purposes to stay at home. It was told to me that my only option is to come in or take an unpaid leave of absence. And I ask you, in the spirit of our students, what is going to be better? If I opt to go ahead and take this unpaid leave of absence, I'm going to cause undue burden. To several people throughout the Princeton community. My students will be left with finding and getting a new teacher in mid-October, once they're getting into the swing of things. I will also leave my lovely, lovely supervisor in a lurch, finding someone new. I have two co-teachers and I collaborate with three different teams of teachers. They will now have a new colleague to co-plan with, to help somebody else navigate Canvas. And then lastly, the undue burden upon myself and that I will be left without pay for an entire year and insurance coverage. For out an entire year, I would have to figure it out out of pocket. It was said in my letter that I can't perform my essential duties remotely. But I implore any of you to shadow me as I embark on this virtual journey. I have created interactive notebooks for all of my students, I've taught myself Flipgrid, I've taught myself Perdeck. And I am going through and using every tool that is readily available to me to try to create the best experience possible. For our students. And so I ask that cases like mine be taken into consideration and it not just be. A blanket stamp of the only way that you can perform your essential duties is if you are in the building. Because I can surely tell you that that's not the case. That's all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Cherry.
Hi, good evening, I just have a few things, I'm going to go through them really quickly and thanks again to staff for their tremendous work, I think they've been working very hard and very effectively. I'd also like to second Eddie's concerns and comments, I think that. The numbers are critical and I'm very concerned about the amount of spending. I also would like to mention the importance of a COVID budget, I think you started to work on one, but I haven't. Maybe I'm just out of the loop, but I haven't seen the COVID budget and I think that's important to have. And finally, I have a suggestion. As an adult, of course, I call it happy hour and so I would hope that there would be a better word for a bunch of kids getting together and chatting. But every Friday at 5:15, a bunch of us get together for happy hour remotely. There are about 15 of us and we discuss the week and politics and whatever comes to mind and try to avoid coming to blows. And it's nothing to do with school, you know, just chatting. And I think that the kids would really benefit by having a group to belong to. Maybe, maybe these things are already being created, but I, I think it would really help them in terms of their mental health, just to. Associate something happy with school that is not a learning experience, but just a chatting experience, so I just want to throw that out, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments out there? There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, if not, then we'll move forward, next is committee highlights. Committee reports, hang on. Equity first, Michelle Tuckponder.
Okay, thank you very much, um, our most recent equity meeting was in September. And, um, the discussion focused on trying to compile a list of all the equity initiatives in the district. One of the things that, um, you know, we talk a lot about equity and we're doing a ton of things around equity. And we had our group come together and, and list all the initiatives, there are 28 initiatives. From teacher training to student groups, extracurricular, in-school, it, it, it runs the gamut. And so, um, it's important to know that we're making that level of effort, it's also important to know where there are redundancies. What, to make an assessment of what we, what outcomes we expect. How effective these programs are, how many resources are going toward these programs, so. It was, it was a great discussion and, um, you know, going forward and Barry and Bob were there and so. Hopefully, we can sort of start to coordinate and align these different programs so that they are, we can have some outcomes and effects that are going to. Change the landscape as it pertains to equity. Secondly, our Equity Impact Analysis Group, we have an initial draft of a policy that we hope. The board will be able to consider before the end of the year and our subcommittee is meeting on October 5th. And the next meeting of the Equity Committee is, I think. I think it's October 14th because I think that election day is, I'm sorry. I can't remember the date I have and I didn't write it down, but it's, it's the first Monday in October.
The 12th, Michelle.
The 12th, it is the 12th, okay, it's October 12th, 7:00 PM, everybody's invited. And if you want to come and you want me to send you a Zoom link, this is to the public. Shoot me an email at my Board of Education email and I will send you a link so you can join us.
Thank you, Michelle, next is facilities, Susan and Brian.
Um, hi, we met on September 21st at 8:30 in the morning. First, the Facilities Committee received an update as to the completion of the referendum projects in the four elementary schools. And we were told that a final decision, decision on opening for those schools would be made on September 21st, 24th, which Barry then. Recommended that we could move forward with the dates that they had recommended for opening. We also received an update on PUMS, which has had several delays to the referendum work. If it, if work remains on schedule, we were informed that the October 19th opening date would continue to be recommended. PH, the work at PHS was just beginning and we were updated on this. I'm told that we were waiting for approvals, which were granted by the town council on the 24th. And at our next meeting, uh, that a schedule would be given as to how the work would proceed at PHS. We then discussed sustainability as we do in every meeting and Matt and Dave provided an update on the Direct Energy. Project, they had submitted paperwork for the four elementary schools and that project will include. And that project will include the LED lighting, hot water heaters and some boiler work. And the next phase of this work would be to file, to begin to file paperwork on energy-saving measures at Pums and PHS and potentially Valley Road. And finally, Dave informed us that he would begin working on evaluating plans for the pool HVAC system at Pums, as well as some air conditioning issues at the district server room and the chiller room for PHS. Our next meeting will be at September 26th at 8:30.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Just going back to the energy saving possibilities at Valley Road, that would come to the board, right?
Absolutely. We know, we know we would do something, it could be a short-term savings, so we'd have to all discuss what is.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, Finance, Brian?
Yes, the last time we met was back on September 8th. It feels like that was a long time ago. We basically covered three topics. The first was COVID-19 financial update Matt presented. And at that time, he presented about $1.15 million of costs in this year's budget cycle directly attributable to COVID. I think since that time, that has been up to 1.4 and is likely to continue to rise. We will see a net, it's possible that Matt will present at a future board meeting. If not, we will get an updated total at our next Finance Committee meeting on October 26th at 10:00 AM. Matt also shared the Extraordinary Aid Award. Just as a reminder, that is extra aid that is awarded usually over the summer to reimburse districts for special education costs incurred in the prior year. And to our surprise and great satisfaction, there was not a reduction in the amount from last year. So we received about one point, or we will receive, Matt, I believe it's yet to come in, but I may be off by a week or two, $1.75 million, which is a little bit more than Matt had forecast, so that is good news. And we also got a preview of the positive result from last year about the budget surplus, which Barry shared with us that night in, at the board meeting. And that's pretty much, those are pretty much the highlights. Again, we meet on October 26th at 10:00. And I believe Matt is carefully, to acknowledge Kip's concern, very carefully tracking all COVID-related expenses, both hard costs and staff costs directly attributable to operating during the pandemic. Thank you.
So if I could just comment a bit. The, we track, in fact, the COVID-related costs because we hope to get reimbursed either from FEMA or through an act of Congress. And that's very positive and I'm thrilled to see that. And you had mentioned, Brian, a number of about 1.4 million. And, but it's also important to point out and to have the proper context that our total COVID and related savings that went into surplus last year were 2.9 million. So twice the cost of, of these COVID-related expenses, we hope are reimbursable in some way, shape or form. So twice as much as that 2.9 million went into, went into surplus. And so I think that's a, that's a positive aspect to it. So I think in order to give the public a balanced view, we have to talk about COVID-related costs and also COVID-related savings, so people kind of understanding how they affect our budgets.
Yeah, I thought of making that point, but it actually was not one discussed in open session. So I tried to reference Barry's announcement that he made later that night. But every point you make, Dan, is a good one, totally valid. And I would just add that the 1.4 is on the way to probably a significantly higher number that we hope to get reimbursed for in whole or in part.
So I have a question, yeah, I have a question about the special, well, two questions. The first one, the special ed, the extraordinary aid. If I recall, I could be wrong, we budgeted at 750, is that right? 750,000?
We did, we did budget at $750,000. I think it was $752,000.
Right, so to get 1.75 million is a little more than a little more, right?
So as the previous business administrator, as I do, the previous administrator budgets its budgets, excuse me, less than expected. So we're forced to budget excess surplus as a school district in New Jersey? The, you know, financial management tool if we budget.
No, I understand. It's just a million dollars more than we budgeted. So I just wanted that to be out there. And my second question is.
Well, but that's actually not accurate. Matt, do you want to continue?
What's that?
My, my understanding is that you had, because we have the budget excess surplus, the budget for extraordinary aid is sort of in two different places. One is in the line and the other is in another location. So that the, the impact, my understanding is the impact of the 1.75 is a little bit more than you expected in the budget.
So, so yes, so the similarity that I had to the previous business administrator was to underbudget that line to offset the surplus that we need. It was over $2 million in the next budget in fiscal '21, which was the first budget I worked on here. We have budgeted forced surplus budget of $2.5 million. So similarly, back at President's Day weekend, I ran the numbers for this year's extraordinary aid, which Brian just spoke of. So, and if we had kept the same proration, I estimated it to be right about 1 and 3/4 million, which is what it came in at. So it's, you know, I feel like we're talking about kind of a similar thing. But the budget for fiscal '21 that I worked on, we base on actual expected revenue. So we try to budget neutral. So we, our goal is to educate our children and to break even. We're not here, you know, we want to have too much surplus come in or too little, you know, or too much going out. So we want to try to have revenues equal expenditures as close as possible. You know, target of plus or minus 300,000 is a goal, but there are many factors that affect that throughout the year.
Okay, so the 1.75 million, was that more or less than we expected? Then we budgeted.
It was right on target with the February calculation. I did a dry run. You know, since I came here, I've been trying to help Special Ed Department since, you know, they don't have any real accountants in Special Ed. They're here for special education, so.
Right.
So we were having, the proration, for whatever reason, typically it goes down. The state budget had flat funded the amount. So typically, in past years when they did that, and it might be related to COVID this year, but the proration actually remained just about flat.
In the budget, we budgeted 1.75 million for extraordinary aid. I'm just trying to understand.
Well, the actual budget number as, as tapped, as you pointed out, is 750,000. The expected number that we expect for fiscal.
Right, was 1.75.
Which we don't really know, because as Brian pointed out, you know, it's based on, we could have three families move out of town. That may have out-of-district placements that are completely high. That could be a pause.
And what I'm trying to point out is, so special, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but special education, you know, a lot of time is viewed as, you know, a drain on the budget. In fact, the prior superintendent said it was one of the reasons that staff had to be reduced. So I just want to point out that there are reimbursements coming in from the state and federal governments to, to support the district's efforts in educating our specialized students.
Right, I would just note that, two things. One, the calculations are difficult ones to try to understand the full cost of special education, which we're committed to in any event, you know, whether we're getting reimbursed at one level or another level. That is part of our mission. That is something we are absolutely committed to. Having said that, the state's level of reimbursement for last year was, Matt, am I right, 56%?
56.
56. So, so they, by their own formula, they should be reimbursing us at least a million and a quarter more for the costs that we've incurred. And I believe that many districts feel that the state's calculation significantly undervalues the level of budget commitment that many districts make to their special education programs. So one, yes, we are reimbursed, but two, we and many other districts, working with the Garden State, Garden State Schools Coalition and other organizations are advocating for greater levels of reimbursement. And this may be the only thing that the governor and Senate Majority Leader Sweeney actually agree on. Just to give them some credit, in the toughest times, they have moved that number forward and expressed a commitment to continue doing so.
Yep, thank you. And then, go ahead, Dan.
No, I was just going to say that Daphne's original point was, we're budgeting at 750 and we received a million 750. You know, that's a significant difference. Now, I agree in budgeting conservatively, but that's a big delta. And, and, you know, even the year before, we received a big extraordinary, extraordinary aid payment. So we have some, some history there. So we should budget conservatively, but realistically and consistent with what we actually expect.
I think we may need an internal board budget workshop. What Matt, I think, was trying to explain was that the convention that the prior business administrator have and many business administrators have, is that because we have to find a place to budget for surplus that we will use in the next year's budget, instead of budgeting 1.75, 2 million dollars in that line, there was $752,000 in that line and a million dollars in another part of the budget that was that this, this was expected. It's a, it's a very complicated budget process. I'm not doing it justice.
I think, I think we can.
The amount, we got the amount that Matt had budgeted for, not a million dollars more.
Okay, I think we can keep going.
Well, and then I have one more question about the COVID savings and I just wanted to know. And I'm, I'm looking forward to the debate as well, but the COVID expenses, where are we saving money?
So last year, we had significant savings for the 60 days of transportation that we didn't have to pay. So we paid our contractors at 47%. We don't have that luxury this year.
Okay.
Right now, our contractor, our main contractor, has been in district with our non-public runs. We have a very, very, very small savings. And they're going to be ready to go starting Thursday and then ramping up with Dr. Galasso's reentry plan. There were definitely savings last year on supplies, you know, people being out of district in overtime, which we had spent higher amounts earlier in the year, but that clearly stopped. So those are a few of the major areas.
Are we ready? Okay, next, Personnel, Debbie.
So the Personnel Committee met on Thursday, September 24th. Tonight, we will be approving the emergent hire process. This allows the administration the ability to hire staff between board meetings. This is being put in place due to the many staffing changes that COVID is putting on the district. We will also be approving a few items for substitutes tonight. First, we are increasing the daily rate to be competitive with our surrounding districts. We are approving 33 building subs, seven at the high school, six at the middle school and 20 spread throughout the elementary schools. This is again due to COVID, to ensure if staff are out sick, that our schools will have substitutes that are knowledgeable in using Canvas and able to teach our students to support any hybrid concerns that people have. We are reappointing some instructional aides to also be subbed. So if they are also needed, they will be taught Canvas and they will be able to sub into classrooms. Again, all of this is to have a better flow with hybrid, with remote, and to make sure our students have some consistency. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Any questions? I think that takes us to Policy. Peter?
Thanks. We met on September 17th and we discussed at some length the Policy 5131, which is the Conduct Discipline Policy, and made a number of edits to that, which is up for a first reading today. Thank you for those of you who have made some comments. I apologize. I haven't been able to get back to you. But with the holidays and my work schedule today, I wasn't able to get back to you before our meeting today. But we will certainly look at those comments and hopefully be able to put it on for a second reading very soon. Our next meeting is October, I believe it's the 16th at 8:00 AM. Is that right, Matt?
Yeah, it's a Friday.
Thank you. And we will, that will be our next meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Student Achievement, Betsy.
Thank you. We met on September 18th at 11:30 in the morning. And we started with a discussion of the Envision Math Pilot. Stephanie Tidwell, the supervisor of mathematics, attended to provide us with a rationale for this purchase of a curriculum that's in use in the sixth grade. This was actually purchased at the September 8th board meeting for the 2021 school year. And it was, this whole program was piloted last year. And given the early, the early move in remote learning due to COVID, the math department will continue to gather data regarding the effectiveness of this program throughout the school year as well. Stephanie will also return at some point in the future to talk about that transition from fifth to sixth grade. So Bob Ginsburg and I have spoken about having a remote schooling update at every meeting. And so Stephanie spoke about remote learning in mathematics while she was at our meeting. Then we spent the rest of the meeting hearing about many racial literacy initiatives that the district has put in place. Dr. Ginsburg asked staff members at each level to attend student achievement to share programs that have been implemented. Keisha Smith-Carrington spoke about the changes to the pre-K1 curriculum. Jason Burr shared a new exploratory program at Princeton Unified called Pathways to Racial Literacy. Jessica Baxter and Joy Barnes-Johnson spoke about the new online racial literacy course at the high school. And that will be open even to the community this coming spring. And Stephanie Greenberg discussed a new professional development program for the Humanities Department called Teaching While White. I also really want to thank Dr. Ginsburg and our staff for sending the Student Achievement Committee the materials ahead of time. We were able to review them and our questions were more informed by the time we got to the meeting. So our next scheduled meeting is October 23rd at 11:30 in the morning. And we welcome the public, we welcome your participation.
Thank you, Betsy. There's no questions. Then I think we're moving on to I1, which is the first read of a policy. The Conduct and Discipline, it's a consent item. Any questions? And then I'm going to just start going through things that are going to be in the consent. So just stop me if I'm going too quickly. J1, aids eligible to substitute. J2, retirements. J3, transfer and assignments. J4, personnel items. J5, resignations. J6, tuition reimbursements. J7, appointments. J8, six-period compensation. J9, Process Schedule C aid stipends. J10, resolution to create a new position. J11, student services. J12, athletic appointments. J13, curriculum instruction. J14, leaves of absence. J15, building substitutes. J16, emergent hires. We get K1, grant applications, the Fiscal Coronavirus Relief Fund amount. L1, not Brian? You're on mute.
Sorry, I have a J question.
Yep.
Athletic appointments. I guess this is, I guess I'm curious about when the, the winter sport coaches get named and approved. I, I, I thought it would be about this time of the year, but I guess maybe we're not there yet.
Yeah, but winter sports, do we know?
Yeah, but winter sports, do we know for doing them because they're inside?
Well, winter sports usually begin today, Friday after Thanksgiving. But the, so those recommendations, and we're looking for guidance from NJSIAA, what they're going to do with winter sports, especially some of the indoor sports for that period of time. So we'll probably have some recommendations for you on the 16th or the 29th prior, next month, Brian.
Thank you.
That takes us to L1, the nursing services to non-public school students. And I just want to say, Matt, there, I had a question from the public about that. And that's simply, that's a mandatory role that we play as this public school for the privates. And it, it is kind of a net-net function to us. We don't, doesn't take out of our budget, correct?
It is. Just the administrative time involved. We have a lot of non-publics in this community.
Oh, thank you. And then M1, financial reports. M2, emergent purchase above bid threshold. M3, formal bid award for Johnson Park HVAC.
I think we should do, I would request it as an action item, given the public interest in that subject matter.
We can do it.
Can I ask a question too?
Sure.
So I just want to know where would this leave our capital reserves?
So we won't know that. So the, Eddie Brady, who has attended an awful lot of meetings, facilities, so he's, so the resolution reads not to exceed. So we put in as the budget for fiscal 20 budget process, a maximum amount to withdraw. So honestly, we won't know until after, until the fiscal 22 budget, when we close out the PHS projects and the JP HVAC projects, exactly how much?
Well, no, but how much do we have in cap reserve now? Just, and, you know, let's say it's a million and a half. I just want to know what we'll have left.
So as of fiscal 19, there was 2.3 million dollars in capital reserve. And we are adding after the fiscal 20 budget money back into capital reserve.
And do we want to just explain then if we're going to vote on this separately? Actually, should I have a, let's do motion and, and then we can have a little discussion about this and vote on it? Does that make sense? If it's an action item? Can we do that, Matt?
Sure. Hey, yeah, and.
Well, so let's have a motion and then we can just discuss, right? Motion, Brian? Second, Daphna? Okay, now we can discuss it. Do you want to just talk about the fact we have to take the lowest bid and any few details of it or no?
Sure. So it, as opposed to most of our other HVAC bids, this one comes in right on target. If you include contingencies, which is how we were reviewing all our projects. So it was well bid, 12 or 13 off the top of my head, bidders. So we, so we were, we were pleased with the bid results, especially in comparison to some of the other HVAC bids.
And the timing, this will be next summer, right? It's going to start?
Correct.
Okay. Do we want to?
I have to give some, Dave, Dave got more of a chance to look at these specs and was able to be a bigger part of the process, I think, than, than some of the others. So I'm hopeful that that helped.
And Matt, I would add that it comes with the unanimous recommendation of the Facilities Committee.
Yes.
Yep. You seem to have lost Dan for the vote. Is he on anymore?
Come back, Dan.
Let's see if.
He went to watch the debate.
I guess so. Nine o'clock. We can just take the roll and, and, and vote it, I guess, without him.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart? Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Actually, Peter, I don't think you can vote because it's JP.
What would be an abstention by board policy?
Just on that.
Yeah. Dan just text, texted he can't get back in, Matt.
Okay.
Just, I don't know if he's in the waiting room?
No, I don't, I don't do wait rooms. Well, not with webinars, I should say.
I mean, I don't know where he is. He has been having problems, though.
Yeah, I'm sure. I don't know what to do.
Can he vote per the phone or no? No. Okay.
Motion passes.
Motion's passed unanimous without Dan. That takes us to N1, consent item, consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Hold on, let's, let me get back to the, hold on, hold on.
Susan, a second, Brian, okay.
Susan motioned and Brian seconded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Could you call the roll, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart? Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
Thank you. That brings us to O1, our public comment on any topic. Again, three minutes. Name and address.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak at this time? There are none?
If not, then.
They all went to debate.
Yeah, we still under there. Then it takes us to P1, public committee, meeting recordings. And that was just a discussion item. And I think there was a question of whether we should start or whether we wanted to record the public portions of our committee meetings.
Yes. A member of the public had brought that to me for student achievement and said, given that we are currently on Zoom and it would be easy to do so, is that something the board would do? And I responded that this would be a full board discussion. What happens for one committee certainly would have to happen for all committees. Is this a discussion we'd like to have tonight? Is this more of a overarching committee design kind of discussion? The, the question basically to me is, when we, when we return in person, will we be recording public committee meetings? Because I think if we, if we were to do that on Zoom, it would set the precedent that we would do that going forward as well.
Right. That was my concern. Or, or, yeah, wondering.
Right. That's the challenge. How would you technologically do it when the meetings become live? It becomes a lot more difficult to do it. Even though I endorse the concept because I think that it makes meetings a lot more accessible to people who can't attend for a whole variety of reasons, and it increases our transparency. I just don't know how we would do it once we go back to being live, which hopefully will happen soon.
But that doesn't mean we can't do it in the meantime and make it clear that we wouldn't because how would we do it, right? That would be at great, some expense to the district. But I, I support recording them now with understanding that, that, that it would not continue once we go back to the buildings.
I, I guess, I, I'd note a couple of things. I, I think this board is completely in agreement about the goal of being as transparent as possible. And there are different ways to do that. In the past, we've talked about getting agendas posted earlier and having meeting summaries. That, that's just the first note. The second note is that I think, you know, as we get to the new year and, and we will have a new board at that time, we should have some, some very thoughtful conversations about how we can best engage the public. The intent has always been for the board to meet in person and for the open parts of committee meetings and for our full board meetings to be open to the public. And we would get somewhere between three. And when a topic was really interesting, 40 people would show up at a board meeting. And through Zoom, we're getting hundreds of people. And, you know, I, I think we need to have a good conversation about how we balance the desire to be highly transparent and, you know, the fact that there's something to be said about meeting physically in public. So I guess I, I, I just feel that this is a discussion that would be better for, for the, the board to have in January and also for us to ask our staff if there are any, you know, pluses or minuses to recording committee meetings and posting them.
So is there a desire then to move to table this to, to the January, to January timeframe?
No, I mean, versus the meetings we're having right now that are all on Zoom, you, you don't want, you don't want to record any of those?
Well, we do record all our board meetings.
No, no, Brian, I'm confused. Do you not want to do anything right now?
I, I, I would love to hear what Barry and members of the staff feel about this.
While we're on Zoom? While we're zooming our open meetings?
I think he's just asking he'd like to have their input on this issue.
Right. We're, we're supposed to act on the recommendations of the superintendent. So that's, I guess that's what I'm asking for.
Well, I, you know, I'm not prepared to give you a recommendation about your committee meetings. I, I think I would need to meet with my central office staff and we could provide you a recommendation of what we believe would be appropriate and to meet your transparency goals. I believe I could provide that to you at the October meeting for discussion if you'd like.
Great. That's great.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I, I don't want to start something that we can't continue. And, and also let's be, let's be abundantly clear that we can make our meetings more transparent and more accessible. All we have to do is think about the time when most people are available to attend our committee.
That's right.
You know, we make choices.
Yeah, but then if they're recorded, that takes that out of there, right?
Yeah, it, it does. My problem is starting something that you can't continue because then you raise the expectations and then you snatch that away from people. So, yeah, I'd like to hear from what, what Barry senior staff would give us some feedback because maybe there is an easily technological way to take meetings.
And we are.
Maybe we could also discuss it in our committee, like the specific issues relative to each committee.
No, probably should want to be consistent.
Yeah.
No, no, no. But at least we could have the discussion within committee and then discuss it as a full board. I don't know. It seems to me a reasonable discussion to have the, I mean, the discussion's different depending on the committee. And we also recognizing that we've had good turnout at Zoom meetings. I think we also can talk about Zoom as an option when we, when we think there's an issue that we, that, that a large number of the public would want to attend. We, we know this is a tool that works. So I think we should hold on to it.
Yeah.
And we did have a question tonight in the chat. Not that we answer all of them, but I saw it. Again, people are saying, what do we do? Are we going to, as a board, meet in person next month? We have to figure that out. I mean, we could easily meet. I think all of us are happy to meet in this sense. But then what do we do with the public? It's working really well right now.
That is a problem.
And with the public, it's twofold, right? One is, can they be present? Some can. And second, how are we going to record the meeting? How are 14, how many are here? 14 of us going to be socially distant and be, what kind of camera are we going to need for that?
Well, and then you also limit the audience significantly.
Yeah.
You're probably, a Valley Road would have maybe five people live in the audience. So.
It's, it's tricky. I mean, I understand that, you know, people want to see us in the buildings and we're, I think, very comfortable. We were there today and, you know, walked all through them. And it's not a matter of us, you know, leading the way. But we also do have this obligation as, as elected officials to be as transparent as possible to as many people as possible. And this is really working right now. I think people like it. So we have to just balance that. Okay. So we're going to continue that discussion. And I think we're ready to adjourn. Can I have a motion? Daphna, second? Betsy, thank you. All in favor? Hands up. Yes. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Bye, everybody.